All right, good evening, everybody. We're going to get started. Okay, welcome to our November 4 meeting. I will have our city clerks start with our roll call.
Mayor Kayleigh Clark.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Karen Howe.
Here.
Councilmember Amy Lamb.
Here.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Present.
Councilmember Sid Gupta.
Here.
Councilmember Ashin O'Farrell.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay. Councilmember Gupta, if you'll read the land acknowledgement, please.
We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Great, thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, we will start with public comment in the room. And later on, we will have a public comment for the two public hearings. So this is just general public comment, starting with Mary.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. My name is Mary Comstock, and I am the regional manager tonight representing the Samamish Library.
This meeting is being recorded.
Excellent. So tonight, as we like to do, we wanted to come before council to give a report on what's happening at your Samamish Library. I have a handout there by your desk, or at each of your spots. I want to introduce my colleagues tonight, also representing the Samamish Library. First, John Kim, who is one of our librarian and information services managers. And then next to John is Alana O'Neill-Gollan, one of our teen services librarians. And she works her schedule at both the Samamish and the Fall City libraries. I want to tell you a little bit about what our stats are from January through October, so year-to-date in 2024. We have had almost 210,000 library visits at the Samamish Library. We have about 19,000 active borrowers. This, of course, is just for the Samamish Library. Of those 19,000, almost 2,200 are new patrons, which is very exciting for us. For the course of the year, we've had 838,000 checkouts. And of those, 550,000 are physical items, books, newspapers, magazines, DVDs, audiobooks, so on. And 287,000 of them have been digital checkouts, so that is the downloadable items from our e-collection. Last but not least, 11,978 computer sessions, and that's just on 27 computers. So as you can imagine, you don't have to, we're seeing a lot of folks using our computers, using this library, and using the items in our collection. The Samamish Library is one of the busiest libraries in the King County library system, of which there are 49 public-facing libraries. Samamish is consistently the fourth busiest library in the system, sometimes fifth, back and forth with Bothell, not like we're competitive. Our fall programs are also on the front of this flyer, but tonight, we want to use the remainder of our time to focus in on an upcoming program, which is on the back of your flyer, which is the Rainbow Connections Program on November 16. And this is an intergenerational pride celebration. I'm going to turn the microphone over to Alana for her to tell you a little bit more about this exciting program. Alana?
Thank you, Mary. Thank you. So I am spearheading the effort on behalf of the Samamish Library, along with our community partners, which are Pride Across the Bridge, Eastside Pride, The Garage, the Teen Cafe in Issaquah, as well as the Highlands Council. And so we're all coming together to create this queer-centered event. I would like to especially call out and thank Councilmember Sid Gupta for his continued participation and assistance with this planning, as well as thanking Mayor Clark for her participation in the event as well. She will be on our community conversation panel. There will be lots of fun things, and I'm running out of time, so I don't have time to list them all, but it'll be a good time.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much. We hope you can join us on November 16 at Blakely Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Tom?
Good evening, council. I didn't hear you be up quite this fast. Good to see you all again. It's nice to be back. And I wish you guys well this evening. You should go through the budget. I remember that all too well. And you have a big mountain to climb, I know. The reason I'm here is, a couple of weeks ago, I sent each of you an email on a certain subject that I really don't want to name for office reasons, but it involves an acquisition opportunity for the city. And I believe that this is something the city should take very seriously. It goes together with a lot of money we spent in the past, plus an activity we've supported as a city for some time. We've put a lot of money into this so far, and I think we are making progress with the objective of this project. And we do need a little more help here with this one. If the opportunity goes away, it would be a serious setback to this project. So I have spoken with some of you individually about it, and I emailed everybody about it. It was a couple of weeks ago. It's the only email you've gotten from me in quite a long time. So with that, I'll ask for your support in going forward. And I intend to pursue this further with each of you. Thank you. Good day.
Thank you. Mary?
Good evening. Mary Victor, Samamish for 24 years. I have a couple really important inputs tonight. If you're going to adopt things, you need to make an amendment, so you choose option two and make an amendment. The first one I'm going to talk about is item 15. That's on the streamlining administration of the permitting regulations. I had written in this morning, and Director David Pyle had called me at my house. We spoke about 10 minutes, and we were talking about what the biggest concerns were. And basically, an environmentally critical area isn't based on size. It's based about how much it's constrained. So the more constrained it is, the more it needs to have done. So there's a paragraph where it talks about that, and I've given you a handout where the blue text is added, the red text is removed. And Dr. David Pyle, excuse me, Director Pyle, says it's okay to get rid of the size thing. So basically, a critical area's letter might be appropriate for some sites rather than residential or one acre in size, and that the additional studies may be needed, because they are, for example, for landslide hazard areas. And then a critical report is appropriate for more constrained sites or applications. So it's not related to how big, small, or large or one acre the site is, or the intensity of it. It's related to how much constrained it is. So I hope that you will move to make that change and adopt it. Here's the modifications, and here's the corrected, if you want to refer to it in the blue and red things, from Mary Victor. Then for item number 14, which is on the critical areas ordinance itself. I'm pretty good with most of the stuff I've given in these inputs before, that it's more process-related. But there's an important thing. So this is a map. I didn't print it out in color. This is the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies. It's very specific to Samamish. It's not in any other King County things, and it goes back to 1994. And they're kind of removing the code for it, but we still have the map for it, and then the maps are going away. And like transfer of development rights, which was a docket that I did in 2019, is actually going to come in front of you in 2025. And some of the things that you can put into TDRs are the erosion hazard near sensitive water bodies and the wetland management areas. So in the code for number 14, for critical areas, they're deleting that. And then I also went online, and I used the Samamish Property Tool, which is like King County iMap, and we actually have wetland management areas mapped now. So my suggestion is, this code is going to come back up with those things in it, in transfer of development rights. So instead of deleting the definition for those now, let's just preserve the smallest definition that you want to keep so that it can work. So those are just two things. It's for item 14 and 15, for your critical areas, and for the administrative streamlining. And then for the last 15 seconds, as you know, all of us have been talking about housing and what we need to do for housing. So in the vision statement and the comp plan, I think we should add the word "stay", and we should add some things so people that want to stay can have housing for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to speak that didn't get a chance to sign up? All right, do we have anyone online?
So with our Zoom update, I'm not able to move this over, but we do have many people signed up. So if you had signed up to comment remotely, could you please raise your hand? Okay, go ahead.
Good evening. Is it my turn?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you. And actually, I was wanting to speak during the budget hearing, but I can provide my testimony right now as well. Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Navu Tal. I'm the president of the Samamish Plateau Water Commission. I'm here today in my personal capacity as a utility customer. The 25, 26 biennial budget, city's budget before you includes revenue assumptions based on a new utility tax. I'm very concerned about the impact such a tax will have on our utility customers. So I am here to encourage the city council to review and consider the public comment letter submitted by the district this afternoon, raising significant concerns regarding a biennial budget built on a proposed utility tax and requesting a dialogue between the district and the city on the proposed tax and a number of other issues of mutual concern. The district would welcome the opportunity to discuss these concerns and look forward to working with the city to resolve and come to a collaborative solution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Am I on?
Yes, go ahead, please. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council. Lloyd Warren, 40-year resident and over 20 years as a water commissioner for Samamish Plateau Water. I'd like to follow up on the comments that Commissioner O'Toole just made. Over the years, there have been a number of issues that have been pending of mutual interest between the city and the districts that have not been resolved. And one of them is a utility tax, but there are a whole array of number of issues that are of importance that should be discussed and resolved between the city and the district. We would like that opportunity to do that. We would like to look at these issues holistically and try to look at the mutual interests of both parties as we try to resolve those. So we would ask you to delay consideration of the utility tax until we have an opportunity to have that discussion and hopefully come to some agreement. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no additional public commenters. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. All right, next up, we have our consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to approve that.
I move to approve the calendar.
Second. All right, moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion before we vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you. So first proclamation, Councilmember Gupta, Native American Heritage Month.
November is designated as Native American Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures, histories, and contributions of Native American communities across our nation. And whereas understanding and acknowledging the history of Native Americans is fundamental to recognizing our shared American history, allowing us to create a more equitable and inclusive future for all. And whereas the city of Samamish recognizes the importance of understanding the land on which we reside, honoring the indigenous peoples who have lived here for thousands of years, and actively engaging in land acknowledgement at the beginning of our council meetings. And whereas it is essential to engage with Native American communities, support their voices, and foster partnerships that uplift their perspectives and contributions, especially in areas concerning tribal sovereignty, environmental stewardship, and cultural preservation. And whereas we encourage all residents to read and share Native American literature, explore indigenous cuisine, and participate in cultural events and activities that celebrate Native American heritage. And whereas we acknowledge the complexities surrounding Thanksgiving, recognizing it as a national day of mourning and protest for many Native peoples, commemorating the arrival of settlers in the centuries of oppression that followed. And whereas this is a time to reflect on the strength and contributions of Native American communities while also addressing contemporary challenges and advocating for sovereignty, particularly for indigenous youth and future generations. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Kayleigh Clark recognizes the month of November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month.
Great, thank you so much. All right, next up, Councilmember Stewart for Veterans Day.
Thank you. National Veterans Day proclamation. Whereas Veterans Day was originally known as Armistice Day, proclaimed by President Woodrow Wilson in 1919 as a reflection of the solemn pride and the heroism of those who died in the country's service, and with gratitude for the victory that secured peace for our nation. And whereas Veterans Day now honors all who have served in the United States Armed Forces, recognizing their dedication, bravery, and the continued impact of their service on the freedoms we enjoy today. And whereas veterans in modern times face unique challenges as they transition from military life to civilian life, and it is our duty to support them in their pursuit of health care, employment, education, and overall well-being. And whereas the 2024 theme, "A Legacy of Loyalty and Service", highlights the enduring commitment of veterans, past and present, to their country and to the values of freedom, honor, and service, reminding us all of the strength, perseverance, and patriotism that unites those who have worn the uniform. And whereas the 2024 Veterans Day commemorative poster serves as a symbol of the shared experiences of veterans from all backgrounds and branches, representing the loyalty, sacrifice, and unity that bind our service members across generations. And whereas it is our privilege to honor and celebrate veterans for their courage, patriotism, and the sacrifices they have made to protect the safety and freedom of our country. Now therefore, Mayor Kayleigh Clark of the city of Samamish does hereby proclaim November 11, 2024 as National Veterans Day, and encourages all residents to recognize the legacy of loyalty and service, exemplified by our veterans participate in local events, and show their appreciation for the invaluable contributions our veterans have made to our nation. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, next up, we have our public hearings. We do have the 2025 property tax levy, if we can get the presentation up. And I think, I don't know, Chris, are you giving the presentation?
Yes, I am.
Awesome.
Good evening, council, mayor, and Mr. City Manager. As we begin the hearings and the discussion on the 2025 property tax levy, I want to review the taxes and how they work for the city in King County. So the dollar amount increase in property taxes the city can levy is capped at 1% per year by state law. And that's a 1% increase for the entire levy for the whole city, not by individual property. The 1% increase to the city for 2025 is $302,466, and that is calculated for Samamish and every other entity by the King County assessor. As the assessed value of the property fluctuates, the property tax rate fluctuates in the opposite direction. So an increase in the assessed value results in a decrease in the property tax rate. For the 2025 tax year, the total AV in Samamish increased 12.26% from $28.42 billion to $31.9 billion. About 14% of the property tax levy collected by King County goes to fund city services, while 62% goes towards schools, and the remaining 24% to King County for various small taxing districts. This is a chart showing the distribution for 2024 by percent. We won't have the 2025 numbers until about February. So you can see the city gets about close to 14%. Schools get most of the money, and a lot of that is from voted levies by the citizens. Next slide. This is the dollar illustration using the mythical median home value in Samamish, $1.246 million. And that's calculated by the assessor's office, and that's what the taxes are based on, is the assessor's valuation.
I'm just going to try to work on this. The slides aren't showing up online.
Okay.
But it seems like it's working. Share again. Okay, just keep going. Thank you.
Okay. So the levy rate for 2024 was $9.08, and that's in the Issaquah School District. There are actually 10 different levy rates within the city of Samamish, based on which taxing districts are your property. So you might be in a different school district. You might have a hospital levy. We have a small area that's in a park district, and a small area that's not in the RTA. So there end up being 10 different rates in Samamish. So King County would have levied $11,314 on this mythical median value property in 2024. How are we doing?
It just seems like the screens have flipped. So we can't see it on the screen, but they can see it online, so.
Oh, you can see it online?
Oh, yeah. So I'm going to, I'm trying to move it back, but it's frozen, so.
Okay, so on the property taxes by dollars illustration, Samamish residents would pay about $1,534 to the city from their total $11,314 taxes. Do you want me to wait? Okay.
Mayor, council, we apparently have a computer that has malfunctioned. If it's the will of council, if we could take about a five-minute break, we can swap those out and then get it back up and running so that everybody can see the same presentation, if that makes sense. And apologies to those in the crowd and those online. If you'll hang tight with us, we will get it sorted out momentarily. So mayor, if you would, put us on a five-minute recess.
Yeah, so let's go on a break. We'll just say seven and hope for the best.
All right, we're good? Okay. I didn't know if they're just pulling up the presentation. Sorry, everyone, 20 minutes later, I think we're back.
I believe those that are online, if you can hear, we are trying to, we're a couple of minutes away from getting started, so appreciate your patience. Thank you, and for those in the room. the room.
Okay, there's this. Just one more. Well, it's up there. I'm sure you can see. Krista, my screen's fixed.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So, I should be good to go when you get to mine.
Okay. I can make you ready panels when we get there.
Are we ready? Okay, I think we're ready to start again.
All right, take it away, Chris.
This is the screen we were on. We're talking about the dollars, the median home value. This was for 2024. So, of the $11,314 that was levied on this mythical home, $1,534 would go to the city. And this is the same mythical home, and we're trying to project what it would be in 2025. So, we've increased the value, median home value, by the 12.26% that the Sammamish AV increased for 2025. You can see that the 2024 levy rate was $1.23 for an annual tax of $1,532.58. For those of you who want to be absolutely perfect and make it to $1,534, too, that there's, it's a rounding difference. The county takes the levy rate out to six decimals. So, that's why this is a little bit different than the previous slide. The 2025 levy rate is projected by the King County Assessor to be $1.11. It went down because the AV went up. So, the property tax that the city would receive from the same mythical median home value would be $1,543.74, an $1.16 increase over the 2024 taxes. That's just for the city's portion, and that assumes that the 1% was taken. Next slide. And to finish up, our next steps are to conduct the public hearing that is opening tonight and consider approving the 2025 property tax ordinance on November 19th. And the city must submit the 2025 property tax ordinance to King County by November 30th. And that's the end. Any questions?
Great, thank you. Yeah, I guess we will, I was just trying to look at the ordinance. It said, we'll open it tonight, but close on the 19th. Is that what you said?
Believe that was the plan.
For both of them? Okay. Okay. All right. I'm going to open this hearing for the 2025 property tax levy, and we'll start if we have any public comment on this hearing item. Thanks, Krista. Sorry. Do you know if we had anyone online sign up? Sorry, yeah. Just a little workout.
Okay, any pre-registants to comment at this public hearing, please raise your hand.
And again, this is for the property tax hearing.
Yes, the property tax levy. Okay, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. So, Council, if anyone has any questions or discussion for Chris before I close the public hearing? Oh, sorry, I'm gonna keep it open until the 19th. Just gonna say that one more time. Council. All right. Good job, Chris. I don't see anything. Does anyone, does anyone want to say anything? We appreciate that presentation, I think. Well, once you finally got it up, of course. But, super interesting to, and then you'll probably come back to us in February, you said, with like the updated 2025 projection or numbers.
If you'd like to, when we get the information from King County of all, what the other taxing districts are charging and what percent the city would be, we could come back.
Cool. Or even an email, something would be awesome. Yeah, put it in an email. Great. Well, thank you, everybody. Okay, so this public hearing will be open until November 19th. As always, please send us any public comments via email and let us know if you have any other questions on this one. So, next, Vicki, I believe you have a presentation before we open the second hearing.
I do, but I'm trying to make sure that the presentation, which is showing on my screen, shows up there. There we go. Okay, I think, I think we're good, and I'm afraid to touch my computer. So, Vicki Carlson, Finance Director, for the record. So, tonight, I am gonna have a short presentation for you. It's always a good reminder, I'll make it onto the right slide. Okay, so it's always a good reminder to, about the budget philosophy that was incorporated into drafting this budget. I'll walk you through at a high level what is included in Budget Amendment Number One, which comes from staff, and I'll show you the effect on fund balance to the general fund. I'll then turn it over to the mayor to open the public hearing, take public comments, and then the mayor will walk you through Amendments Number Two through Seven, which are the ones proposed by Council, and then close with what the next steps will be. So, just as a reminder, Council provided direction earlier this year to maintain level of service and hold staff harmless through the budget process, and this budget has been drafted with that in mind. All full-time employees currently funded in the budget today are included in the 2025-2026 budget. We are also following the recommendations from the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force, and you're gonna see that language that's included in the Budget Adoption Ordinance that drafts staff to start working on implementing a utility tax by January of 2026 and explore the creation of a Metropolitan Park Districts. And I do want to remind folks that both of these items will require future Council action. The utility tax will require Council to adopt the enabling legislation sometime next year before the tax can actually take effect, and the MPD takes at least two years. So, getting directions to start on both of these now is, is very important. And we also wanted to improve transparency and trust in both the budget as well as the capital improving planning processes. So, as a reminder, the items that are on the slide, on this slide, these are the budget reductions that have been applied to all departments to bring the budget in line with current level of service by removing the what-if budgets and reducing other costs where possible. With one of the budget reductions regarding the interns, I do want to address one issue that many of you have asked about, and that's what will happen to the restoration sites without an intern. Our restoration specialist has come up with a plan to ensure that the hard work of the Sammamish stewards and other volunteers won't be wasted. Be focusing our efforts on the sites with the highest level of need classified in Phases Two and Three. We won't take on any new sites during this time, but those critical sites will continue to be watered, mulched, and maintained. So, I hope that answers that question. And as we continue to look for cost-reducing measures, that brings us to the proposal that is Budget Amendment Number One. So, talking about changes to the general fund first, we have included a detailed list of all of the amendments in the memo that's attached to the Agenda Bill, but the amendments can be summarized as follows. So, there have been several projects that were budgeted this year that won't be completed by the end of the year. So, we're gonna take the remaining budget and move it from this year into next year. We have also adjusted both the fire and police budgets to reflect the final budgets for both. We have reduced the budget accordingly for the change in level of service for snow and ice removal, and we have increased the negative budget for the vacancy allowance. So, essentially, that result, that results in a budget reduction. So, what we've done is we've fully budgeted all the full-time positions, but we recognize that we have vacancies throughout the year. We just don't know which positions or which departments those vacancies will fall into. So, we have a negative budget of 8% in our non-departmental budget to account for those vacancies that occur throughout the year. So, the net effect of these general fund amendments is to reduce the use of existing fund balance by about $1.8 million. But I do want to stress that the updated proposal still uses about $18.3 million of existing fund balance to balance the budget. Even with these adjustments, ongoing expenditures still exceed ongoing revenues by about $6.4 million for the biennium. What this proposed amendment does is push out by literally a couple of weeks when we would run out of existing fund balance. To kind of put this in perspective, in 2025, our total general fund expenditure budget is just shy of $67 million. You divide that by 12, it's about a $5.6 million spend every month in expenditures. So, that means that we still need new revenue sources to attain fiscal sustainability going forward. The other item worth noting with these adjustments to the general fund is that the department expenditure budget increases by less than half a percent compared to the 2023-2024 biennial budget excluding transfers to capital budget, and that's the effect of removing all of the what-ifs out of the budget that were there before. So, this is a visual of what the general fund looks like if Amendment Number One is approved. If you ignore the reserve requirement and just look at the ending fund balance at the end of 2025, or I'm sorry, at the end of 2029, we'll have about $2.5 million left. Reserve requirement in 2029 is about $14.6 million. So, you can see we, we have a problem in 2029, and then we're fully out of funds by 2030. So, there also are some additional amendments included in Number One, which affect other funds. Again, details are provided in the memo, but this slide will give you a summary of the funds that are affected. Please note that none of these changes affect the general fund. Most of them are just changing budgets, affect budgets associated with some capital projects and removing the contingency budget that had been in the Park CIP fund. Before I turn it over to the mayor, I do want to get to the next slide. Just let you know next steps. So, the mayor will open the public hearing tonight and become public comment. The public hearing will stay open through the 19th. You'll be going through the Council proposed amendments tonight. Next week, after we know consensus which amendments will be moving forward, I plan to come back to show you the updated effect on the general fund for any of those amendments that are pushed through. Close the public hearing on November 19th and hopefully adopt the amended budget on November 19th. And this last slide, this is just for records here. So, six amendments suggested by Council members, these are the page numbers in the packet. And with that, I will go ahead and turn it over to the mayor to start the public hearing, and I will pull this slide down so you all can see the screens.
Great, thank you so much, Vicki. Okay, so I'm opening the public hearing for the 2025-26 biennial budget. We will start with public comment in the room. Debbie?
Thank you, and good evening. It's Debbie Train. Been in Sammamish since 2010. Well, first of all, I want to start by thanking you for recognizing and incorporating the discussions that went on in the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force. The two recommended potential ways we could generate additional revenue, it's a horrible situation to be in, but after our analysis, we also came to the same conclusion that those were the best options for the city, even though they both require some, they require public support, which kind of brings me to my testimony tonight. The one thing that, that we talked about on the task force was before we tried to, or before we told the public that we had to increase tax, that was the only way to solve the sustainability problem. We need to be absolutely certain that we have scrubbed what we're spending and that we're not using funds maybe in inappropriate ways or in ways that are not the most fiscally responsible. So, there's, the one thing I don't see, you know, documented in the budget proposal is a lot of money was spent this year on studies related to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and those should be, those should not be continuing on, and I assume they're not. So, I want to just make sure that we're not continuing to think that's a level that we can continue to spend in outside consulting going forward. And in particular, I'm concerned about the amount of extra expenses, extra taxpayer expenses are being incurred to support the development of the town center. The town center has an economic development study added to the comprehensive plan. It has multiple road projects added to the comprehensive plan, even projects that I don't think people recognize as being driven by the town center actually are partially driven by the town center. And I think, I don't know that it's fair to go to the public and ask for more tax money while we're spending our existing tax money supporting a single project in the city to the extreme amount of spending that we're spending now. Now, I, I believe I submitted a PRR to identify how much we were spending to support the town center annually and how much revenue, how much of that we were offsetting with fees or whatever that we're collecting from them. And I, I will have to check, but I, I don't recall ever receiving an answer to that. So, I will follow up on that question just for clarity. So, I think it's really important that we understand how the taxpayer money that we have is being used by the city and how concentrated it is in one little segment of the town. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jan?
Hello, this is Jan Byrd. I'm one of your park stewards, and I review the proposed amendments for the 2025-2026 budget. And I kind of agree with Amendment Number Four to remove the town square purchase and retain those funds for other uses. And one of my concerns is, you know, we could have maybe zoned for that early on or purchased it early on, and now it's gonna be at a much higher cost because it's been zoned up for commercial and higher residential density. And I also oppose Amendment Number Five to swap the funding source for the town square project from the general fund to the Park CIP Land Acquisition Fund, because my understanding is we start out with about, I think, $11 million, and now we're down to the 4.3. And when this is spent, is this the end of that money, and then we don't have it for future projects? And, you know, from our land acquisition webpage, it says, "The city's goal is to protect habitat by doing this, retaining tree canopy, preserve natural beauty and character the community. And the community's highest priorities are for new trails, preserving tree canopy, protecting streams and corridors, preserving wildlife habitat, and increasing waterfront access." So, the purchase of land for this urban, commercial-centered plaza, it doesn't seem to really fill most of these goals, and with our limited funds, and the fact that we're already gonna develop the notch property to connect to the town center, it seems like the developer ought to be, you know, funding the rest of this. And I also support, although I know it's pie in the sky, Amendment Number Three for a full-time arborist position. And also, as far, I've also found out regarding, I was concerned about Amendment Six, because it sounded like we were funding that, but we weren't funding the interns, and now I found out some other information in the interim. So, if with Six and Seven, it seems like they're dependent on Five, which once again is dipping into the, the Land Acquisition Fund. So, I have an issue with that. And also appears to me that the Urban Forestry Management Plan seems to be more buried and not getting much priority in the Natural Resource and Environmental Sustainability Initiative. And, you know, we passed that tree ordinance back in 2016, and I kind of thought, finally, it took us so long to get that Urban Forestry Management Plan. So, it's a, it's a disappointment that we still, you know, don't have an arborist in the, in the near future, despite the fact we do have trees that are dying right now in our parks. So, and it, so anyway, yeah, I think I kind of covered all my points at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
Good evening, Council. Thank you very much. I'm Nancy Way. I live at 3451 Eastlake-Sammamish Shore Lane Northeast. I'm, I can't really represent the Parks Commission, though I did conduct a poll of Parks members. So, I'd like a little bit more time than my three minutes. It doesn't seem to be such an issue this time. I'm here-
I think we, we're gonna keep it at three per comment.
Okay. I'm here tonight to speak against Amendment Five to the budget, which would strip the $4.3 million from the Parks and Recreation CIP and use it to purchase property at the town, at the town square for the town center development. Budgeting is a tough process. It requires setting priorities, values. Passage of this amendment would state the Sammamish City Council and government no longer values the purchasable lands for parks and preservation. Your citizens have said in countless surveys and meetings that our green spaces are what they most highly value about our town. Again and again, they have said acquisition of public lands over, as a top service that they expect from the city of Sammamish government. I want to talk about the positive accomplishments of this CIP acquisition line item. I want to talk about the positive accomplishments of this CIP acquisition land item, which came to being in 2017, which created a land acquisition plan and strategy document, and funded with $13 million. Clearly, it was a priority for the city. Since then, we have acquired more than 66 acres of new parks and open spaces with these funds, and we still have a balance of the 4.3 million. Staff, the Parks Commission, and the council have indeed rubbed two nickels to gather, and created dollars by negotiating gifts, winning grants to stretch funds, and maximize gains. To see this money stripped is almost punishment for being a good shepherd of taxpayer funds. As well, the $4.3 million purchase of commercially multifamily zone land is a violation of the city's land acquisition strategy. The priorities here, as Jan mentioned, we're preserving tree canopy, protecting streams and corridors, preserving wildlife, increasing waterfront access, and new trails. These are not characteristics of an urban town square. A larger town square maybe is a good idea for us, but using the land acquisition fund to do this is not. As many of you know, I'm chair of the Parks Commission. We were shocked to see this come forward at the last minute of the city's budget process without any notice to us and any input from us. Because of the emergency, what I consider an emergency, I called all the Parks Commissioners over the weekend and asked them-
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will send this, the rest of this testimony-
Please do. Anna?
Good evening, I'm Anna Yorba, Sammamish resident. I'm speaking in favor of amendment number four, to remove the $5 million town square purchase from the budget, and I strongly oppose amendment number five, to swap the funding source for the town square project from the general fund to the Park CIP land acquisition fund. Staff argues that the town square is a central component of the adopted town center plan, which includes a green spine and town square. The plan makes specific recommendations for land acquisition, including planning and purchasing. Since that plan was adopted, there has been no action to establish open space zoning or to purchase property for public use. The town center infrastructure plan states that any development in the 81 zone should contribute 66% of its required open space to the green spine open space system, to be developed by the private sector through a master plan process. Zoning development standards and design guidelines were meant to achieve the goals of the plan. In 2024, approval was granted to the STCA for Sammamish Town Center Phase One to allow 82,000 square feet of commercial space and 348 residential units, subject to open space requirements that apparently did not include a town square. The town square within the approved commercial area would be an amenity for businesses and should be provided for in their open space requirements. Since 2002, when the city bought the notch property for public use, the area surrounding it has been rezoned for the highest intensity uses. With commercial zoning and rising prices, appraisal and values have increased 20 times what they were in 2002. If the city was committed to the green spine and town square, they should have zoned the land for park use or purchased it in advance of commercial rezoning. I don't know what property has been targeted for this acquisition, but the purchase of land at current rates would be a windfall for developers who benefit from upzoning to the detriment of the people of Sammamish. The existing Sammamish Commons now serves as a primary civic focus. The Commons was developed at great expense for a community gathering place. A new town square purchased by the city will duplicate those investments, and in addition, require ongoing funding for development and maintenance. The purchase of land for an urban, commercial center plaza would fulfill none of the goals of the Park CIP land acquisition fund and should be denied. Perhaps the city should consider the use of the notch or lower Commons land if they feel that a second public plaza closer to town center is needed.
Thank you. Thank you. Cheryl?
Hi, I'm Cheryl Wagner, and I've lived here since 1989. I'm a Sammamish steward, a native plant steward, and a past park commissioner. So two issues I want to discuss tonight. Proposed budget amendment number five, to use the entirety of the Parks Department Land Acquisition Fund, 4.3 million to purchase the land for a town square, instead of transferring money from the general fund. I'm firmly opposed to this. The Park CIP Land Acquisition Fund should not be raided and decimated to provide central plaza money to the general fund. The Park CIP Land Acquisition Fund is not a one-time pot of money, as they said. Actually, the stated intent of this fund is that it be used as needed for future years, as documented in the 2024 Park Recreation and Open Space and Land Acquisition Fund. I was there on the board and the commission when this occurred, that we were able to get this money, and we saw it as used for the future. The land acquisition document states the priority of land acquisition for the city is to protect habitat, retain tree canopy, and preserve the natural beauty and character of the community. The plan to divert the Park Lands Acquisition Fund doesn't meet these goals and is a bad precedent. We ask you to leave the Park Land Acquisition Fund for its intended use and purpose. The second issue that I come for is the elimination of the summer interns in the city budget. I have worked on these areas for 10 years or more, and summer interns are cost-effective and manage an average of 20 restoration events throughout the summer. They also assist with all recreation and voluntary events throughout the summer, and they maintain these sites with watering and weeding. In addition, we provide mentorship and educational internship for these folks from the university. And that's something that I thought Sammamish was proud of doing so. They do not replicate what the rest of the park services provide, or the other employees provide, as they're interns. This is an educational event that they're having. It's like when I was a nurse practitioner and I had a clinical rotation, this is their clinical rotation, and I think Sammamish should support it. We ask you to find money in the budget to reinstate these positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to speak on this item? If you didn't get a chance, go ahead, Tom.
Tom Odell, 35-year resident of Sammamish. I'm here to talk about amendments two through five. I'm going to do it as a whole, rather than address each individually. The Southeast Sixth Street project, in my opinion, should be either deferred or not done at all with city money. Typically, development has paid for infrastructure that are related to it, and I'd hate to get away from that, because you're setting a very bad precedent. The other thing, too, is the size of the budget for it. We have a bad history of managing projects like this. Every project, road project we've had in the nine years I was on the council, was over budget, usually by a factor of two. So the 1.9 you have here is probably not real. With respect to the arborist, I'm in favor of that. I pushed this when I was on the council, and I believe that the arborist can do a lot to help Sammamish with its trees, and also to keep things on track around here in terms of who's doing what with our forests. They can probably also generate a fair amount of fine revenue for the city, in my opinion. With respect to taking money out of the Parks land acquisition thing for any other purpose, I was the one who put forth the motion to establish this fund years ago. The intent then, and should be now, was to acquire open space for the residents, not to build amenities for a development, per se. So I would highly encourage you guys to go back, look at the history of what we've done with this, look at opportunities, such as I spoke of earlier tonight, that are out there and will continue to come, and let's not put all of our eggs in this one basket here. There is, by the way, a very large park area immediately to the south of town center called the Commons. Redmond doesn't have that, so they built their open plaza. But we have that option for people who want to walk a couple of blocks. So as good an idea as that may be, I don't think it's up to us to do it as a city. And I agree with the people who come before me, saying this is not the way to go. If the developer feels that this is a useful amenity for this town center, and it will help his foot traffic in the city, fine, let him do it themselves, them do it themselves. But please, let's not use all of our money on this particular project. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you. All right, was there anyone else? Krista, anyone online?
If you pre-registered to comment, please raise your hand, and you would like to comment. I see no commenters, thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Krista. Okay, council, we are going to start with amendment one. Let me just back up here. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just had a couple of questions. You had your graphs, you know, I love your graphs, where you showed we were able to maintain the budget and the fund balance necessary out through 2028. Can you share a little bit more about what your revenue assumptions are that were included in that, and what your cost increase assumptions are in that graph? And I don't know if you could put that graph back up, because-
I can try. I'm gonna have to-
That may be a bridge too far, sorry.
Reshare my screen, so let me try that first. If it comes up. So you're referring to-
It was just a bar chart that showed-
Yep, okay, there we go.
That's the one.
So this slide right there.
Yeah, so what are we assuming?
So this is the total budget. It's all of our revenues for the general fund, so it's property tax, sales tax, fees and charges, interest earnings, so it's all the revenues for the general fund against all of the expenditures, so it's just the total general fund, the total general fund budget. It's not breaking down the one time versus the ongoing, it's just the complete budget.
But does this assume the utility tax? Does this assume-
The utility tax is not built into this at all.
Okay, and then what are the assumptions for the cost increases for '27 and '28, and '29 and '30?
So I have that in the budget document. I'd be happy to email that out to you. We do have the model built out that has the assumptions that are built in for the cost increases, as well as revenue adjustments for the out years, for the next four years past the biennial.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you, mayor.
Sounds good. Okay, council, so my plan was to go through each amendment, and the person sponsoring can make that motion if they'd like. If they get a second, we can do, they could speak to that and go to discussion. So deputy mayor Howe, for amendment one.
I'd like to move to, I'm moving to direct, I move to direct the city manager to include amendment number one in the updated 2025-2026 budget for adoption.
Second.
All right, that's been moved and seconded. Did you want to speak to that, or does council have any discussion on that?
No.
Okay. Council, any discussion before we vote on that first one? Okay, so all those in favor of amendment one say aye.
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 Opposed? Was that seven ayes? Okay. Okay, amendment two.
So I move to direct the city manager to remove the Southeast Sixth Street project and return the funds to the fund balance.
Okay, I'm not hearing a second for that. So that motion fails, as does that amendment. Amendment three.
So I move to direct the city manager to add a full-time, and I want to make a small change here, urban forester and/arborist position funded by the removing of the town square project, which would save, let's see, about $5 million, and with that, we would be able to have the position for approximately 20 years.
Okay, hearing no second. That fails, and that amendment fails. Amendment four.
So I move that we direct the city manager to remove the town center, the town square project, and return those funds to the general fund.
I'm not hearing a second. That motion fails. And that amendment fails. Amendment five.
I move that we direct the city manager, I'm sorry, let me just get that, to swap the primary funding source for the town square project from the general fund to the Park CIP land acquisition dollars.
Second.
All right, movement seconded. Would you like to speak to that motion, councilmember O'Farrell?
I'm in favor of this project. I feel that our city is in need of an open space gathering point in the center of our city, and we have done a wonderful job with our parks, and we've provided lots of parks and open space for the last 25 years for our residents, and I feel this is another amenity that we have yet to provide, that I am in favor of seeing provided for our community, a place where we could hold our farmer's market and maybe expand that project, have more kind of impromptu gathering spaces for our community to meet and congregate. And so I'm in favor of seeing this project moving forward.
Thank you. Deputy mayor Howe?
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to kind of work with the team here for a minute, and kind of dispel some things that I think are set in people's heads. I have a feeling that when people think about a town square, they're seeing concrete. I'm seeing actual head nods. That isn't, that isn't what it is. That isn't what it has to be. It can be an open area that does connect and create vitality internally for the people that live there, the people that want to come there and congregate. It's an opportunity for the community to come together in a congregate way, in a way that they can explore and want to spend time in a city center. If you were to say today, "Where is the city center of Sammamish?", if you lived in Klahani, it certainly wouldn't be here. If you live in any of the neighborhoods, they're going to come up with someplace else, and maybe not even city hall. So this is a rare opportunity, I think, to create something truly wonderful and magical, if you will, that actually acts as a collector of individuals to come together for, it could be, you know, an outdoor amphitheater that could be converted into different types of spaces, using the right, using the right, frankly, the right way of putting something together. So I urge you to expand your thinking, and not limit yourselves to thinking that it's paving over paradise, because that isn't, that isn't what anybody would want, and no one would agree to that. It could end up being a literal forest that you wander through to get from point A to point B. So I'm not going to belabor that point, I'm just going to suggest that it doesn't have to be concrete. The other point I'll make, too, is that we have not upzoned anything yet. So there seems to be a perception that we've upzoned- So there seems to be a perception that we've upzoned and that there's been an immediate price increase, but we haven't actually upzoned anything. Not since, what, 2008? So the plan is still the plan. So there's a perception that it's skyrocketing, and perhaps that isn't really necessarily the case, and that for some reason, the developer is on the hook to, to build this thing for us. We want control over this thing. We don't want a developer to do that. We want to have the ability to decide what tree goes where, what pathway goes where, is this a dirt trail or is it gravel? We want that right and that ability to decide. You lose that if you cede control. I think you'll all agree that the notch is too small to do much of anything. It requires having more space. So that's what this gives us, is an opportunity to have that space. I hear the concern over depletion of those reven, of that, that, that money for parks. It's a, it is painful, but you, if you want something, you have to buy it and pay for it, because you can't get stuff for free. You just can't. So brave people a long time ago decided, let's set up a big park fund and it built itself up to millions of dollars, which was amazing. And look at the good that we've done with it. But we have parks that we cannot complete. You've got, you've got the Klahani Park that's a $20 million project. That's just going to have to sit there, isn't it? Because we simply don't have the funds to do it. The way that I'm approaching this is from a fiscal sustainability point of view, which is, we need, as a city, to come up with new revenue options to help us relieve the tension of our increasing expenditures. We need to have that money to maintain the parks we have. I don't want to see them diminish. I don't want to see them become fallow, unusable. So we need to shore up some things internally to do that. I'm happy to pass the baton to anyone else that's interested in speaking.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I would like to concur that town squares are often described as the public living room, and I know that we have the plaza here, and while I have enjoyed many, many sunny and rainy and hot and cold events here on the plaza, it's not big enough anymore. We had a Riga Palooza. When we tried to do Riga Palooza, it's just, it's too crowded, there's not enough room, there's not enough space. And so if you, if you do a search and you look up town squares, there are ones that are quite picturesque, and so it isn't to say that this is in contrast or in defiance of parks. This is really a way to create those gathering spaces and to create that sense of community that we have unfortunately outgrown here on our plaza. And so we want to be able to make sure that for generations to come, there is a place for all of the residents of Sammamish to be able to come together and gather. I'd also like to point out that the money, there will still be money in the general fund if something came along and we felt that we really needed to purchase some, some piece of parkland, that it was a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and we felt that it was appropriate. There's nothing to say that we couldn't make that decision. Council always has that opportunity. Is it a shame? I think we heard a couple of people say, the city should have done this when they created the town center plan. I won't deny that. Shoulda, coulda, woulda. But we're here now, today, and we have to make good decisions from today looking forward. And I think that a lot of our job as the council is to make decisions looking 20, 50 years out, not just what's right in front of us, because once it's gone, it's gone. And so just, just as any other park, our town square, I do believe will become a prized possession and a loved amenity by everyone in our community. So, thank you. And thank you to Councilmember O'Farrell.
Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, thank you. I may be coming at this from a different angle. I do support the purchase of the town center square property. I, you know, I'll concur with Councilmembers Stewart and Deputy Mayor Howe on the importance of that and what that could look like, right? That doesn't necessarily have to look like one thing or another, that's a conversation to have with our community. But at the same time, you know, I was on the Parks Commission when those land acquisition dollars were allocated, and I remember what the vision was then, and I think that vision carries through now. And I'm not sure that as, as much as I do believe in this project, I'm not sure that those two visions are the same thing. And I guess I'm looking at 2026, when we hopefully have our completed bike and ped master plan, and we're looking at a list of projects that we want to be able to focus on connectivity and especially non-motorized connectivity. And wouldn't it be great if these, this $4.3 million that we'd allocated could be used for, whether it's property purchases or resements, where that land is going to be preserved and it's also furthering a lot of our council visions? So I know I'm sort of straddling two things, but that's because this is a difficult decision. So I think I'm sort of struggling with this amendment, but I do support the town square property.
Councilmember Trine?
Okay, the rhetoric is interesting. So 4.3, 4.23 million dollars in purchasing land over the next 20 to 50 years going out over time, because you're right, once it's gone, it's gone. Once, once you destroy the trees and you take out, look, it's, we know it's a second growth forest, we know the history of, of, Stewarts, they know what the history of this land is. So we have 100-year-old trees, 120-year-old trees, probably at the max, but there's a lot of them. And so if we don't protect that land and buy, and purchase the land that has those trees on it, in 20 to 50 years, they'll be gone. And once they're gone, they're gone. We're creating a benefit for a developer. That's what you're doing. So just be honest about what it is you're doing. There are few trees in the notch, it's mostly asphalt. So if anything, it's going to be a restoration project, but the reality is, you're going to, you're actually going to concrete it. All right? Yeah, the notch is mostly asphalt. It's a lay-down lot. Okay, look at the map, walk the property. So the notch, yeah, you guys... It's a, there's no trees, there are very few. So you're going to, what, keep them? All right? Just take a look at what they did with the brownstones. So you're going to tell me that we're going to preserve the trees on the property? I'm going to just say I doubt that. You're going to steal from the future of the beautification of this city and you're going to help one developer? And to me, that's borderline on, I mean, we need to check with our attorney and see if we're benefiting this guy and actually doing a gift to him, because that's what it looks like to me.
Emily, is this a gift?
Thank you. Councilmember Lam?
She also happens to be here on a visit, so let her have some time to actually look at the actual information and the data. So you're asking somebody to report on something that doesn't have all the information in front of them. And that's not a slam on you at all, Emily, we get that Carrie Sands isn't here, but...
Councilmember Lam?
So I am also struggling with this, but in general, I do support the swap. I believe that we need the town center to create something that will be very beneficial for our city. I do see a lot of the parks now, we don't have the money to even finish off master plans. Beaton Hill, from what I understand, won't even be done for another 10 years, and we don't have the funds. I would really like to see those completed using the dollars that we have and be able to maintain those. So I do support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Council, the motion on the floor is for Amendment Five. It has been moved and seconded. Is there anything else before we turn to a vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
All right, thank you, Council. Amendment Number Six, Councilmember Stewart?
Yes, and I apologize, but the amendment that's provided, I actually have some revised numbers, but let me start with talking about the Sustainability Ambassador internship program. So as has already been raised, our other internship program was not so much of a program, but just that we had some folks. The Sustainability Ambassadors have a program called the Sustainable Neighborhood Ambassador Program. That's a program that currently is up and running in Kirkland, Redmond, and Issaquah. All of those cities are looking to renew that program, and the Sustainability Ambassadors are in negotiations with those cities to do that. They just recently signed on the city of Burien. And what this program does is that it's meant to establish a formal learning partnership between Sustainability Ambassadors, the city, the school districts, with a dedicated funding source so that they can build community engagement traditions around shared outcomes, right? So we have outcomes that we want to see, where we want to be able to advance our climate action plan, and if we look through our work plan, right now, our primary goal in '25 and '26 is community outreach, and I believe I've heard the term that we want to, we want to change the hearts and minds of the residents of the city of Sammamish and get them moving in a direction to have more sustainable habits and lifestyles. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of resources or a lot of folks that can work on that. The SNAP program through the Sustainability Ambassadors provides a program coordinator as well as a communications coordinator. I'm sorry, did you have a question?
Yeah, point of order. Is there an amendment that's coming out of here?
Yes, Amendment Six.
I am so sorry.
I think you said you changed something.
I was supposed to make the motion first. I apologize.
Change, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, let me get to the wording here, sorry.
Page 56.
So I move to direct the city manager to include Amendment Number Six with revised numbers. It would be 52,500 over the biennium, so up from 40,000.
Second. All right, moved and seconded. Please continue.
My apologies.
Thank you, Councilmember Trine.
Yep. So the 52,000 would include a program coordinator. Why I think that this program works very well with our city is that we know that our city staff in sustainability is quite stretched thin. This program coordinator would be the only person that our staff would have to meet with, and they could meet with them just once or twice a month. That's what they have set up in the other cities. And then this program coordinator, the Sustainability Ambassadors, would be responsible for hiring, training, and it would be to hire, train the ambassadors, to design the impact projects aligned with the needs of our city. They would track the impact, engage peers, educate parents, inspire the community, and collaborate with local champions and influencers to really try to get the momentum going. The $26,000 a year would pay for the program coordinator, it would pay for communication, and it would pay for two interns, one from Skyline and one from Eastlake. The overhead for this, they're, they are nonprofit, and they have just 10% overhead. So for those who track nonprofits, that means that 90% of the money that we spend will go directly to the program. And then the, the 10% means that they're paying for the insurance, they're paying for all of the payroll, et cetera, to cover off on that, so the city wouldn't have to increase any of our insurance costs with these interns. My recommendation would be that we start here, see how the program goes, and then we can always make a mid-buy, depending on how that, that's working out. But this group also does some work with our partners over at K4C. If we do some stormwater programs, they can also help us with matching funds. And in the other cities, they've been working across departments to try to get funding from multiple departments. So I know some folks asked for some examples, like what kinds of projects do they do? So in the city of Redmond, they are working with their transportation department, and they got some money from them to create a little friendly competition throughout the schools in Redmond on getting students to participate in riding their bikes to school to reduce the, the traffic. And then the winning school will get a small donation from the city to their school's ASB fund. So those are the kinds of projects that they can do on a small level. They can also do larger things around solid waste communications, right, to really help with recycling and reducing our solid wastes, which we know we've been kind of stuck on a plateau, no pun intended, in terms of being able to reduce how much of our waste goes into the landfills. They do have some more information, so if anyone would like that. It is a year-round program, and they have a program to have the interns working more over the summers when they're not in school, and then to be able to keep a steady five hours a week during the school year, so that we get a full year of, of effort out of them. My hope would be that if this is successful, that they would be able to expand their summer intern program to be able to help out in areas like with the stormwater stewards and other areas, that we would have this established internship program, where again, we can kind of outsource the management of the interns, which can sometimes be, you know, interns are wonderful, but they can also be a lot of work, because sometimes this will be their first job. Thank you.
All right, Council, would anyone else like to speak to the motion on the floor? Amendment Six, Deputy Mayor Howe.
Yeah, there we go. I had an opportunity to take a look at the website. They, I mean, impressive kids, impressive bios, it's a really interesting program, targeted with primarily, it was middle school, high school, this year proposing is high school, I think, and teachers. I am not in favor of supporting this purely from the standpoint that we're, you don't hand a drowning man a pebble. It seems like a tiny amount of money, but when our expenses are such and our inability to generate new revenues are such, that any, any addition to the budget is concerning. It is a death by a thousand cuts, and it's a, once you start the bleeding, you, you got to stop it. And so the only prudent thing to do is that every opportunity that we have to stop any expenditure before we commit, we should do it. I, and we, you know, that, that would be the, my, my concern. Having run a P and L before, having to lay off staff before, I don't want to get to that point where we, I don't want to get to that point. And by looking ahead into our future, which is not dark, but it's a little dim, I want to, I want to be really aggressive on pursuing revenue opportunities. That's where I want to see our attention focused. Frankly, if there were kids working on, you know, something like that, maybe I would be interested.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I appreciate that, I really do. And I guess one of my concerns is our community and our staff and this council did an amazing thing. We created a climate action plan, and that was a really big feat, but it is just a plan. And our number one goal as a council is, is environment and sustainability. And we have nothing in our work plan for '25, '26 to work towards that. And I think we have an obligation, because every year that goes by that we do not reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, we are making a problem such that we may not be able to come back from that. We know that we have goals we have to reach, that we committed to. As a council, we voted on goals to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, and we won't reach them. We won't reach our 2030 goals and we won't reach our 2050 goals if we don't take action now. And the problem just gets worse every day that goes by. So I appreciate the, the focus on that. I think that we've found some places to cut, but if we don't get started on this, this is going to be an exponentially more expensive problem to solve in the future. This is one of those times where an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Thank you.
Councilmember Lam?
So I really want to support this, but unfortunately, I can't. I was on their website, and like Deputy Mayor Howe said, these are amazing group of kids. I'm not seeing the direct impact that would happen to our climate action... I'm not seeing the direct impact that would happen to our climate action plan, so unfortunately, I can't support this.
All right, counsel, anyone else before we vote? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
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 So can I get hand raises for ayes? I think we had three. And then nay? All right, that amendment fails. Amendment seven, councilmember Stewart? Councilmember Stewart?
I'm sorry?
Amendment seven?
Yeah, well, I'm assuming if we're not going to spend $50,000, we're not going to spend more. But we've had a number of proposals come to us. For example, the people, oh, sorry, probably not going to get a second. So again, I will be adjusting the amounts. I did not come up with these dollar amounts. I move to direct the city manager to include amendment number seven, which would be $300,000 over the course of the next two years.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. You can speak to that?
Yeah, so we've had a number of proposals come to us. For example, the People for Climate Action came to us and asked us to increase the number of EV-wired parking spaces in our regulations. Again, it wouldn't be a cost to the city to do, it would be changing our regulation. In order for us to meet our goals, we have said that we need to be 100% EVs in the state of Washington by a certain year, yet we don't have a plan to have enough chargers in the infrastructure in order to support that. It's a minor amendment that many other cities provided into their code, and our staff came back and said, "We can't do that." So we have no provisions anywhere in our budget or in our work plan to do even the smallest of changes that would be quick wins, that again, if we don't do them now, once certain development happens and that wiring isn't there, it will be infinitely more expensive to go back and retrofit. And all we have to do as a city, we don't have to pay the cost to build it or do any of that, we just have to change our regulations. There are programs in the city of Shoreline, for example, where they've taken national standards, they didn't have to come up with any standards, and they provided programs that were requirements and incentive programs for any new development, redevelopment, or remodels, to be able to increase the sustainability. So again, if we are looking ahead at the town center development and potentially seeing redevelopment in our centers to be able to meet our houses, our growth targets, and our affordable housing targets, if we don't put these incentives or these requirements in place now, going back and retrofitting is way more expensive. We just said we're not going to spend a dime to communicate to our community, right, to get the development that's already on the ground to retrofit. So I think we have an obligation to do some sort of work to prevent further development that is not sustainable going forward. We can certainly amend the amounts, but the fact that we don't have any staff time to even work on a small amendment that changes the percent from 35% to 65% on EV parking space wiring is concerning to me that we have nothing in our budget for that. So that's what this is for, is to be able to have some provision in our budget so that we can make these changes in 25 before the permits start to come in, because once the permits come in, if that code isn't there, then they are grandfathered in. Thank you.
Counselmember Gupta?
Yeah, thank you. I had a question for staff, maybe. In the packet, there's a concern about removal of work plan items to accommodate this. Could you maybe speak to what that looks like, what that might look like in terms of the load on staff?
Sure, counselmember Gupta, happy to respond. I think anytime you go in and are looking at amending the code, it's a pretty substantial work plan item. And so that would be, it generally takes about a year to do something like that, and we already have two different code, we're doing code review right at the moment on two different items, and we're, council is contemplating doing more code review next year as well. So we wouldn't be able to do other work plan items, we would have to, it requires consultants, it requires staff time, and it requires dollars, all of the above, and that's a, you know, it's about a year-long process, depending on what you're doing. Hopefully, that's helpful.
Yeah, yeah, it is, thank you. Is there, I know this is like very preliminary, but do you have any sense of what the scale of what we would have to take off the work plan or move in the work plan would be?
Counselmember, without knowing the, you know, the broader parameters, it's hard for me to say what is, what was put into the amendment was our best guesstimate based on a very high-level approach, and understandably, we don't know more, but that was our best estimate for something like that. Again, code review requires a lot of staff time, consultants, and our fine friends at OMW to help us with that process. So it is, again, it touches a lot of, a lot of different pieces of our operations to go through a full code review of something like that.
Thank you.
Counselmember O'Farrell?
I'm sorry, Scott, you probably already just answered my question, because I had a question about the cost of 500,000 that we have popped in there. Is that what we estimate this type of undertaking would cost? And we would have to take that from the budget somewhere else?
That's correct, councilmember. If whatever that cost would be, then we'd have to find cost savings if you wanted to stick with our budget approach of zero net sum for whatever action is taken. Obviously, council can always choose to do something different than that, but that's been, from the staff perspective, that's been our approach, about trying to keep our cost deficit down while council has to take some future votes around potential revenue enhancements. And so again, until we get to that point, I think, you know, my approach, our approach has been to be on the conservative side around adding additional costs. And so that's why we had, and you heard from finance director, that, you know, if you're going to add something, you got to take something away so that we are, stay at that sort of zero net increase level.
Okay, and I hear what you're saying. I guess it's just, it's disappointing, and I'm sure everyone in council feels this way, although I'm only speaking for myself, that, you know, we do have that climate action plan, and it is kind of disappointing for us not to be able to be moving forward with something in our budget on that. And I understand we have these huge budget constraints, and we have to adhere to that. I look forward to working, you know, more substantially in that climate action plan going forward, where we can start really getting some things done, particularly about, you know, our solid waste reduction and things like that, and helping educate our community on those kinds of things. We can start moving the needle on some more practical goals. So, okay, I take your point about the cost. Thank you.
Counselmember Lamb?
So I support this. I support this because we passed a climate action plan, and we all, to some extent, ran for our council positions on a climate action plan. So now we passed it, and we're not going to do anything with it. That's what I'm seeing, this is what I'm hearing, and that frustrates me. If every municipality did things this way, we wouldn't get anywhere, and this is why we're not anywhere with climate. You know, we have climate goals, and unfortunately, we are having some fiscal issues, but I do believe we need to find a way to make this happen. I, you know, I would love to work on a project for waste diversion, you know, to ban single-use plastics from our commercial business, but we can't, because we don't have the dollars, we don't have the staff time. I would really like to reprioritize what is in the work plan for our climate environmental area and figure out what we can do to actually make a difference this year, instead of just having a bunch of studies and a plan that we're not doing anything with. So I do support this.
Scott, did you have something? Because I know councilmember Stewart, I think, changed the amount at the beginning as well.
I just wanted to clarify for council, and I appreciate the conversation, and just to remind that we do have sustainability elements that we are spending dollars and staff time on in the work program, and I appreciate that council would like to do more, and I think that we all share that goal, if there were dollars available. So with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Counselmember Stewart?
Yeah, Scott, it would be great, could you articulate? Because I thought that the only thing we had for any kind of community reduction in the work plan is outreach right now. Sorry, distracted by the zooming of the camera there. That was, (laughter). Yeah, that was, that was a lot. Because I think that's where my primary concern comes from, is that the only thing we really have, I know we're looking at potentially doing some work on the city's reductions, but as we know, the bulk of the greenhouse gas production comes from our residents and our commercial buildings, and we don't have any, anything there. Outreach is it, and I think it's just the sustainability newsletter, which is something that comes out once a year. And then we have our sustainability commission at, like, the farmers markets. But other than that, I don't think we have any other planned work plan items to address this. For example, David Pyle just responded on the development code, and we actually, in the city of Sammamish, have no code requiring, we have no code that requires any EV parking spaces in any development at all. So again, we have a goal that says we have to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from our vehicles, we're encouraging people to convert to electric vehicles, but if you live in a multifamily, you would have no infrastructure to charge your vehicle. And so that's going to disproportionately disadvantage people who live in multifamily.
Mayor, if I may, I appreciate the, again, the conversation. I just want to clarify a couple of pieces. David has shared with me from the back of the room that EV charging is already required by code for, and, say it louder?
Multifamily.
For multifamily, thank you. And that we are, we have our Energize Eastside, our heat pump campaign that is part of the budget. We have, we're doing cap prioritization by the sustainability commission, and we are working on waste reduction programs as all part of the work plan for the next year, and we're still working on our fleet electrification as part of that work plan as well. So, I mean, I, again, I do appreciate where councilmembers are coming from, and again, this is obviously, you all get, make the final decision, and we are fine with whatever comes out. I just did want to clarify that there are pieces within the budget that we are working on.
Can I ask David a question, then? Sorry, David, but you sent an email, like, just a couple days ago and said, "Electric vehicle charging spaces are not a requirement for any type of development in the Sammamish development code."
Building code is different.
Right, but that building code is the one that's inadequate, that the People for Climate Action said we need to increase the percentage of, and we don't have time to, we don't have any resources to modify that, right? Sorry, I'm lost.
So development regulations can be placed in two different areas in the code. One would be the building code, the other would be the land use or development code. And typically, the land use or development code is part of the entitlement process, which starts much earlier. The building code is then applied to structures when they come in for permit, right? The building code does require 10% of parking spaces be EV charging activated, 10% of parking spaces be EV charging, ready to connect, ready to put the charger in, and 10% of the parking spaces be EV forward compatible, meaning that there's conduit put in, and that you could basically just pull a wire and then connect a charger, so that it's easy to adapt. So that's 30% of parking spaces, 10% are, there's a charger on the wall, ready to use, 10% is, you could put the charger on the wall, very easily, the wire is in place, ready to go, 10% is the conduits there. So that accounts for 30% of parking that's being built in buildings, multifamily. We don't have a lot of multifamily. We're about to have more of it, hopefully, you know, as time goes by. It would not be applied to middle housing.
Correct.
So, you know, it, there are instances when it does and does not apply. The response that I provided was that we do not have a land use requirement that requires EV charging to be accounted for as part of the land use entitlement process, where you have to show in your parking lot layout where the EV charging will go. That is accounted for later as part of the building code application, that the building permit process with building design.
Got it. And that's the building code that we can't amend, because we don't have enough staff time?
Well, the building code, we would not amend, because that's something that we get by way of the Washington State Building Code Council, who did have a very heavy debate on this as part of the last code update cycle, and they landed on that requirement. We, the part that we're talking about is amending the land use code, and it would probably go somewhere in the Parking and Circulation Chapter or something along those lines, that would then identify that a certain percentage of parking needs to be, you know, higher percentage than the building code, because we can't amend the building code but for certain situations, because we have to go through the State Building Code Council to do so.
Thank you.
Counselmember Trine?
Yeah, maybe David Pyle, you don't want to run too far away.[1559.13][1559.13](laughter) But it could be for the city manager, though, because climate change, if that's the conversation here that's being taking place, is on our work plan, isn't the tree ordinance a part of our work plan?
Yes, that is included on the 25, 26 work plan. Still working out exactly when that would start and what that would look like. The big challenge there is trying to align that with the up-and-coming wildland-urban interface, fire codes, because there is quite a conflict between a desire to retain and grow tree canopy, but also provide safe space for protection of homes in the wildland-urban interface areas.
Yeah, so with that being said, it sounds like there's a lot of things that we are doing, and we'll be spending our time, so I will not be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you, David. All right, counsel, if we're ready to vote, all those in favor of amendment seven say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So I think that's four, three. That passes. So Vicki, when we look at item number 12 for discussion of the budget, is that, are we still on the same item? So we have an unfinished business of budget deliberations and a hearing, because obviously, we're keeping this hearing open till the 19th.
Correct, and I think you just did the budget deliberations.
Okay.
Unless there's any other comments you have.
Awesome. All right, so counsel, open up for any other general budget deliberations before we finish this section. Counselmember Lamb?
This doesn't pertain to any of these specific amendments, but I did want to suggest a, an area to reduce. What we're spending is the newsletter. I know it's a 12-page document, I'd like to know if we could reduce that down to eight pages.
I don't know how much that would actually save us. Is that like an amendment, or like a motion?
I'd like to know how much we could save.
Yeah.
Mayor, I apologize, don't have that kind of information right on the top of my, of my head, we'd have to come back to council with that. I think for that amendment that just passed, we'll have to come back and have a conversation with you all about what, what changes, both on the work plan and from the dollars perspective, and we can follow up with some information for councilmember Lamb's question about the newsletter at that time.
Okay, good, thank you.
And to clarify, I believe amendment seven, you changed that number, reduced it from 500,000 into
300, yeah.
To 300,000?
Correct.
Thank you.
Over the biennium.
Over the biennium. Sorry, I just want to make sure we got that part captured. So yeah, Scott, I don't know, I guess, when you would be coming back with that, or with councilmember Lamb's answer. Is there any other budget discussion for Vicki, Scott, and Chris tonight? Or questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. How's council doing? You all need a break before David transitions?
Yes.
Let's do, let's be back at 8:45, so six minutes. Everybody? Next up, we're on to unfinished business, as we did finish item number 12 combined with item number 11. with item number 11. So next is our final check-in on our comprehensive plan with David.
Good evening, Mayor, council, David Pyle, Department of Community Development. Appreciate being here this evening to talk again about the city's comprehensive plan and implementing development regulations. With me this evening, I have Tyler Quinn-Smith to my right of Framework, and Jeff Arango to his right of Framework as well. We also have some additional staff in the cloud, ready and available to answer questions, including Arch staff as well as other city staff, should questions come up about affordable housing. I'll turn it over to Tyler, who will do a quick presentation, and we'll get right into the primary topic here.
Thank you, David. Good evening, mayor, council. Thanks for the opportunity to provide an update on the comprehensive plan and implementing development regulations. I commend you on behalf of the project team. All the work you've put into this, into this effort is impressive, and we really thank all the feedback that you've provided on the plan and on the code over the last two or more years. So tonight is the final review of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations. I'm going to start by giving an overview of where we are in the timeline, recognizing that there's a little bit left as we approach adoption in December. And then I'll cover at a pretty high level the updates that have been made since the October 11th drafts of the plan and the code before we pause for discussion and any formal motions you all are interested in making this evening to the plan or code. So here's a peek at many of the moving parts that have been part of the process over the last several months. Of course, this review phase of the project has included quite a lot of coordination with agencies, as well as focused meetings with the Planning Commission, in which we received the formal recommendation for the plan back in July, and then the code recommendation in October. We'll note that the Commerce, Department of Commerce review period is closing in the next week or so. However, the city does not expect much feedback in the way of that review, just because there's been a lot of proactive engagement with agencies and other key stakeholders that were, that was done months ago at this rate, and so we're not really expecting much substantial recommendation coming out of that effort, which keeps us on track to come back to you in December for the planned adoption of the plan and the code. So first, focusing on the Comprehensive Plan amendments that have been made since the October 11th draft, which we previewed with you all on the 15th of October, I believe, just two small items, the first of which was made possible through motion from you all, and that was to include a dark sky policy and the land use and environmental stewardship element. So now, on page 50, under Land Use Goal Number Six, there is a new policy for dark skies. And then a little bit larger change to comply with the GMA mandates for capital facilities elements. We've included in Volume Two, High Level Capital Funding Overview, in that volume that complies with the capital facility requirements under the GMA and includes some historical analysis of the city's revenues and expenditures towards capital projects, and then suggests some finance and funding opportunities for the future. And this is just one of many kind of efforts that are, is kind of in step with the city's forthcoming capital facilities plan. Okay, so just those two small amendments being made to this draft, and we will pause here for discussion on any specific changes that the council majority would offer to the comprehensive plan as we prepare for the final plan and adoption next meeting.
Councilmember Lamb?
So I would like to have the land acknowledgement added to the front, the beginning of the comp plan. I can make a motion?
You can definitely make that motion. But we should definitely discuss, probably with the tribe, is my thought.
Yeah, yeah, that was, yeah, that's where I was headed. Okay. Should I make the motion, then, or should we just?
When would you need to?
Come back on this?
No, yeah.
We'd have to have adequate time to integrate it in. It's not terribly difficult. The challenge is more in the formatting side of it, because when you move one thing on a page, you move everything else. So we'd have to be creative with that. That's not a reason not to do it. I would say we'd have to reach out to the tribe if you'd want us to initiate that conversation. I could do so tomorrow. We would really need to know, and we, I guess, we could have that, it would be a point of final direction on December 3rd, and we could be ready to do it if you wanted to do so, if it was acceptable per the conversation.
Sorry, another deputy mayor and I do have another, an outstanding call with one of their tribal members that we could probably take care of that, if that would work. So by December 3rd, like a formal vote that evening?
Yeah, we'd like to know in time to publish the packet. So, you know, if that was something that we're getting, I guess what I'd want to know is, is there anybody against it? You know, are we, are we going to be, because to go through all those motions, I guess I'm kind of, we're at the very end, we're kind of limited runway here, so we're trying to figure out what we need to do to prepare for December 3rd.
Okay, so probably by the end of, like, that last November meeting, even if we could have something. I mean, just because I think the study session, I don't know, yeah, we'll figure it out. Cool. All right. Anyone else?
I do note that there was a comment made by Councilmember Lamb as well regarding a photo that is not in Sammamish, it's actually on the Sammamish River Trail in Woodinville, I believe, and we'll be working on trading out that photo.
Good eye. I'm no lighting up over here, so. Oh, Councilmember Gupta.
I know we have some questions in our packet about the affordable housing requirements. Is that coming up next, or do you? Okay.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, moving on to the development regulations, this discussion item will take a little bit longer, just because there's some more technical changes that have come forward since the last draft. So predominantly on the, what we would call legal cleanup side of things, handful of small edits have been made to the code since the 11th, primarily to improve the usability, internal referencing, and internal consistency of the code. So nothing too substantial to report there. A few new definitions for middle housing types for planned and existing transit stops, just making sure that tables and the parentheticals beneath tables are matching up. You'll notice that all of the Town Center amendments have been removed except for definitions, and this is just recognizing the forthcoming Town Center Amendment Project next year. Few more serious changes that have been made here around the regulation for step housing. So this is collectively permanent supportive transitional emergency shelters and emergency housing. We, per the direction and recommendation of staff, have created a few more regulations around those housing types that are permissible by state law. So these are in Chapter 2105 on Uses, two new sections there, Y and Z. There have also been some small criteria simplifications made to the quasi-judicial rezoning process. On page 53, that's in the Administration Chapter. And then some rather extensive consolidation, but just for the purposes of usability, in the Temporary Uses Chapter or subsection, excuse me. And this is just recognizing some inherent overlap that exists between homeless encampments, safe parking areas, and temporary tiny houses, excuse me. So before, there's just a little bit redundancy in the operation kind of requirements and regulations, duration requirements, et cetera, for those different types of uses. We've consolidated them underneath one temporary use permit for encampments. I'm going to hold my comments on the mandatory housing affordability program, because we have a slide coming up on that. On the right-hand side of the slide here, some GMA updates that we just needed to clean up. Cities are now required to permit the development of organic material management facilities. So these are essentially composting facilities in which anaerobic digestion and other techniques are used to compost materials. Per direction of staff, we've permitted those in the Community Business District. And then a small change has been made to the middle housing overlay cottage allowance in the Middle Housing Overlay 1, so that's the R1 equivalent, just to remove the maximum lot area provision, which formerly, I think, limited it to three acres. We've just removed that limitation altogether, just recognizing the opportunities that could open up with larger lots. Okay, so in the following slide, we're going to unpack this mandatory affordable housing program. I'll just note here a few kind of legal cleanups that we've made for that, particularly around applicability, and just clarifying the state code-enabling legislation for this program. There's also been some small tweaks to clarify the alternative compliance mechanisms for opportunities such as in lieu fees and land dedications. There's also been an elimination, just, or an adjustment, rather, of the exemptions for this program. And so on the next slide here, we're just summarizing the program highlights, which remain unchanged, 10% of all units needing to be affordable to 80% of the area median income or below, and then specifying the three alternative compliance mechanisms that are an option to applicants. In the top right, the incentive provisions have been removed from this chapter. Formerly, we had impact fee waivers, excuse me, and the potential for property tax exemptions. These two items are going to be refined and established, and then therefore added back to the code in work plan item next year. So we recognize there may be quite a bit of questions on this slide. I can certainly come back to it. Just starting with one additional legal recommendation that has been proposed for the final code draft, and that is just to clarify, once again, the RCW citation that enables this sort of program in the city. So with that, I can pause and turn over to you, Mayor, for discussion.
All right, council. Councilmember Gupta, did you have something on the affordable housing? Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I had, so in, on page 55 or 345 of the larger packet, it talks about the number of, on number three, under the general requirements, the number of required affordable housing units is determined by rounding fractional numbers up to the nearest whole number from .5. So does that mean that a single-family home development would be exempt because it, or would not be subject to any requirements because the fraction would be .1 or less than .5?
It just means that they wouldn't have to build the unit, but they would pay a fee, a proportional fee.
Oh, okay, I see. And then for the, on page 57, where it talks about the cash payments in lieu, I remember a few weeks ago, we talked about cash, a fee in lieu versus a fee in lieu only for fractional units, and that was maybe where I felt a little bit more comfortable. I'm not sure how I would feel about just offering alternative compliance and just allowing fee in lieu as an option, not least because, you know, I imagine there aren't going to be a lot of huge developments, or if development comes in in smaller pieces, we'll be collecting money, and that money might sit there for a bit until we get enough to fund a project. And as things get more expensive with construction inflation, we might have collected the appropriate amount at the time, but by the time we're ready to build a project, it would not be enough to actually build. That would be a concern I have.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point. One of the potential amendments that the Planning Commission recommended, though, was limiting the use of any fee in lieu revenue to units built in Sammamish. So at least that would prevent units from, you know, being built outside the community, which we understand the city could still get credit for. So that's, I think, a piece of it. And then, you know, I think you raise an important kind of policy question in terms of, you know, allowing fee for those other types of units. You know, we've heard from, for example, the Seattle program, that people typically opt into the fee as opposed to building them onsite. There are pros and cons. The pro of making them build onsite is you're going to get those units in the same neighborhood, they're going to be comparable, so there's sort of a, an equity component of that. However, on the flip side, if you did generate a fair amount of revenue, and that could be consolidated into a, you know, high-quality project that maybe has other components to it, there could be some benefit in that. But your point is a good one, that, you know, inflation can change sort of the cost of producing those units over time. If you're not getting consistent enough revenue in a short enough period of time, it can be difficult to aggregate it. So there's definitely some policy choices there. As we've written it right now, there is flexibility for folks to pay the fee, but certainly something for the group to discuss.
If I could add on to that, I agree with everything said there. In my experience in talking to builders and in sitting in Arch Board meetings and talking to different proponents of affordable housing, there, the argument seems to be stronger to allow the fee in lieu, because the way in which it plays out with requiring the onsite unit is that fewer people benefit from affordable housing, because fewer units are ultimately produced. And what I mean by that is that the, when the fee in lieu is applied through a housing program, it can be stacked and leveraged for the city to then be recipient of other projects that are funded through grants, or through, Amazon, you know, has funds, and Microsoft has funds, Arch has funds, and they can be built, generally speaking, at a different cost per square foot. Now, it really depends on what your desired outcome is, is, the analogy that I've heard builders use, and I'm just parroting what I've heard builders say to me, is that it's akin to winning the lottery, that one family will get to have an affordable unit that is kind of like winning the lottery, but that other people who are on the waiting list will not win the lottery. Versus if you take the dollars that are the in lieu dollars and you apply them through a housing program, that you can leverage that, and it goes a lot farther, because you're able to then bundle dollars and ultimately see it built at a lower per square foot, building more units, making more affordable housing available to the broader waitlist of people that are on the waiting list.
The one last thing I'll add to that is, I think the other thing to note is that if the cost of providing the unit onsite makes the project unfeasible, it could be a barrier to production in a way that the fee might not be. So just another thing to think about.
If we do, if we were to consider the Planning Commission's amendment to keep the fee in lieu dollars restricted to projects in Sammamish, do you foresee a level of development that would allow for the creation of meaningful affordable housing units? Because I know that was sort of the thing we ran into with the TDR program, where we were all excited about it, and then it turns out, staff's analysis was, we didn't really have the capacity.
I would say, I mean, obviously, always difficult to predict that, but just one point is that every development will be generating revenue, so it's not just the projects of scale. And so I think from that standpoint, the city's already going to have a fee in lieu of fund, and so the additional funds from larger projects could help create a pool of resources that then could be leveraged. So just to keep that in mind is that, you know, a lot of the smaller projects are still going to be generating fees, of which the city will have to figure out the best use of those funds.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilmember O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mary. You may have already answered this question because it's something akin to what councilmember Gupta just asked you. What's the downside when, from the planning commission's recommendation, recommendation number three of keeping those, the fee in lieu in Sammamish? Is there a downside for us doing that? Is there something big or better that we could, if we allowed those dollars to go outside Sammamish? Are they better used outside Sammamish? Would we end up, as a region, getting more affordable housing built, et cetera, et cetera? Can we realistically, not knowing, of course, how much these dollars will be, but can we realistically, as a city, build anything meaningful that would come out of that? Or is it just going to be a pot of money that we're not quite sure what we can do with? It's not enough to do something, but we have to hold on to it because we said we were going to?
Well, you know, as Jeff said, it's sort of a gamble. We don't, we don't know how this middle housing legislation and changes are going to play out. We don't think that the city's going to receive a massive influx of applications overnight. As of January 1, we might see a slow trickle come in. The, I think that the, keeping the funds in the city would be good as we start to see the town center develop, we start to see other programs come online in the city, especially if that was partnered with a land in lieu, which is something that we're considering, and we've talked about as part of the town center work. So now if there was land available and we had funding available, we might be then able to attract, maybe we could put together an Arch Housing Trust Fund application with a local contribution, a land contribution, then we'd be more attractive to other funding sources. So the downside to that is, is that if there wasn't anything available, and maybe we're slow to see the town center build out and slow to see other projects come online, that we're stuck with the dollars. And we're, we don't want to be stuck holding these dollars for a long period of time. It's not a good look. And so, you know, creating a, you know, shall be held for priority within the city, however, maybe contributed for regional housing efforts that benefit the city or something along those lines, to try to help us understand, you know, when, when there's a good opportunity that's happening in Redmond or Nisquah, that we should partner with them on, that we could then apply those dollars there as well.
Okay, so I was just going to ask David. So if we decided to do that and hold those dollars in Sammamish, but then as we walk through this brand-new process, we would say, hey, there's really not a lot we can do with this money, so we can then, we could then redirect it in another way regionally, was there, you know, are legally would be allowed to do that?
I think it's how the code is written.
Okay.
You know, the, one of the concerns I have, and I think I heard Emily say this when we were talking through this code, is, you know, how long are we planning to hold these funds?
Yeah.
And it makes me a little nervous because I've seen impact fees, for example, be held for long periods of time, and it, it's sort of, we collect the fee, we should be providing the service.
Right.
And we need to figure out a program that's actually going to do that, and if we're just holding them and not doing that, then we're not achieving what we said we would achieve.
Yeah.
Okay.
One other point I'd just like to make is that the, you know, we provided some feasibility analysis as part of Town Center that looked at projects there. We've also looked at middle housing projects through Arch, and I think it's important to recognize that if inclusionary programs are really targeted to only, you know, we hope that we get the deeper affordability levels, but they're really targeted at what is feasible, which is sort of the upper level. If you do collect the funds, you might have more flexibility to leverage those to meet some of the deeper affordability levels that are, is the bulk of our growth target. For example, we've implemented the bonus parcels. If we took the funds and leveraged that as development of the bonus parcels, which could include more than housing, right? Could be a larger development with some of the other amenities that the community would like to see. There's an opportunity to do that. I think prioritizing the units to be built in Sammamish makes sense. If you go back to our vision and our goals, you know, one of those is for folks to be able to live and work in Sammamish, and I think that wouldn't solve it. I think, you know, having maybe an out where the council, if there was a really compelling project, you know, could provide some flexibility, I think that might make sense because you might be able to produce more units, which is good, but you, it would be more difficult to meet the other goals for, that are more specific to Sammamish.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilmember Lamb?
So I think the funds that we collect through the fee in lieu payments, I think that it should stay in Sammamish. I mean, we already fund Arch $100,000 a year, and typically, you know, those projects aren't being built here, and we have no ongoing revenue to fund affordable housing projects, and this would allow us to have that revenue. Am I correct?
That's correct. And to be clear, you know, we, we don't real, have a real strong opinion on this. We're just here to get policy direction from you all so we can craft the code and come back on December 3. So this is very helpful, and, you know, maybe round it out with a motion, and we'd really like that.
Agree with David, and we could do some, you know, back-of-the-napkin kind of estimates just based on past growth rates to give a sense of what, you know, might come at the door.
Okay. There was another amendment from the planning commission about the exemption for property owners when demonstrated that middle housing cannot be achieved. I do not support that. I did have a question on the exemption for new single-family residents up to 3,000 square foot built for the property owner to exempt that. What if it was up to 2,100? And I was thinking about that because at 3,000 square feet, to me, that seems a little bit more luxurious. I mean, you're talking bonus rooms at that point. And so if it were a lot smaller, if it was 2,100, that is a modest-sized house, it would be anybody that wanted to come in and build a larger home, if they didn't, and they built a smaller home, they could always add an ADU on it. So to me, that would achieve their goal of not paying the affordable fee, and yet we would benefit by having two smaller units.
So I guess I, I'll respond with a question, which is, by that, do you mean that anything, the fee would only apply to anything more than 2,100 square feet, and you get the first 2,100 square feet as an exemption?
Yeah.
Or the unit have to be smaller than 2,100 square feet?
It would be anything 2,100 or smaller would be exempt. Yeah.
That makes sense. Got it. Because another scenario the commission talked about was exempting the first, say, 2,100 square feet, so you were exempt from the fee because it's a per-square-foot fee that's adopted as part of the city's fee schedule. And just wanting to be sure, could you back up two slides or ones? Yep, right there. So under alternative compliance, fee in lieu price per square foot, so we do plan to come back in Q1 and actually move the, or develop the fee. We don't, this is the policy statement in the code, the fee would then be planted in the city's fee schedule. So you'll be hearing more about the formula, working with Arch, and coming up with the, they already have the fee and the fee formula. We just want to walk through and make sure the council's comfortable with the fee that we're using and the formula.
Okay. I was just thinking about that because it seems like that would be a win in terms of getting more affordable units, and then people who didn't want to pay the fee, then they wouldn't have to.
I think you're on the right, I think you're on the right track there in terms of applying any exemption sort of universally and approaching it from, you know, wanting to have the incentives geared towards smaller, more affordable units, because yes, we will get some true affordable units, but we're also trying to leverage just smaller, naturally more affordable market units. You know, I think the other thing to point out from the planning commission's recommendation was they wanted something that was specific to an existing property owner, and I think there are some challenges with, you know, the city being able to manage that. What is an existing property owner? What if that existing property owner is also a developer too? And, you know, just sort of the logistics of that. And I think just kind of focusing on any exemptions driving the policy goal, which is more affordable housing across the board, you know, makes, makes sense to us.
It seems that a straight 2,100 square foot, if a unit is smaller than 2,100 square feet, regardless of who's building it, makes it very simple for implementation and easy to track.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Did you want to make that motion? Sounds like David.
I can make that motion. An exemption for a new family residence up to 2,100 square feet built for the property owner. I'd say I motion that.
I'll second that.
All right, moved and seconded. Counsel, would you like to discuss? Councilmember Gupta, you want to speak to that motion?
Yeah, just for clarity, is this, properties below 2,100 are exempt, or is this the first 2,100 square feet of any property are exempt?
Just one note on that. If you go with 2,100 square feet of any unit, you're going to exempt pretty much most of the, like, pretty much all of the middle housing would become exempt. So there's a couple of options. You can either say specifically for the first single-family home or the first unit, but if it's just the first 2,100 square feet of every unit, then that would be a significant, you know, change.
Well, we say, say you built three 2,100 square foot units as your middle housing choices, then you would not be paying the fee because each of those would be 2,100 square feet, which, if that's the outcome, it's a smaller unit, that's something else we're after. So it's the balancing act, I think, is a, it's a good question.
I think one thing I might be concerned about is, and I think staff kind of alluded to this in their comment in the packet, is we want to encourage a diversity of housing types, and so if we create an exemption for single-family homes, you know, we talk a lot about how Sammamish is mostly built out, and it's, our housing stock is mostly single-family homes. So if we create an exemption for single-family homes, we're not, we're maybe moving the needle in the wrong, what I would say is not the direction that we are moving otherwise.
I have one suggestion, this is sort of off the cuff, but if the goal is to promote smaller units, what if you don't exempt the single family, but you exempt the smaller units that get developed, get developed with the single family? So let's say you did an ADU, or you, you know, wanted to add a second unit that was smaller, what if somehow that was factored in somehow to the, to the exemption?
I thought ADUs were exempt anyways.
Yes, ADUs, sorry. Another smaller unit that's not an ADU. Right, under 800, but it could be larger than that.
I guess my goal initially was just to encourage people to build smaller homes. I mean, if somebody wanted to come in here and build a 3,000 square foot home, we have a lot of those. So my intention was to encourage people to build smaller, and if they didn't want to pay the fee. So if their goal ultimately was to have a massive home, they could build two 2,100 square foot homes, or then they could divide the lot, and we would still have, like, two homes. Or they could do a 2,100 unit home and then have an ADU that was 800 square feet, let's say.
So, yeah, I appreciate where you're going with that, not to complicate this more.
But you're gonna.
The middle housing rules that are in the code already drive at smaller units. So generally speaking, the first .5, the first unit could be .5 FAR, right? So that's going to lead to the same size homes we have today. We already have that in our code. The setbacks are the same as we have today. The only difference we've added is that now you're restricted to a 3,000 square foot footprint. That still doesn't bring a small home. You know, you could have a 9,000 square foot house if you had a big enough lot, just because you could stack three stories. So, but what we are doing is that if you want to build two units or three units, that your FAR only goes up incrementally. So you go from .5 to .65 for two units. So now you're spreading that across two, two units, right? Then for three units, it goes from .65 to .8. So now you're spreading that across three units. So every time you add more units, the units get smaller, and you're still limited to the 3,000 square foot footprint. So you could, in theory, have, you know, stacked flats, you could have row houses, townhouses, duplexes, all these different types, but you're going to start to see the units get smaller. So we're already driving at that. We also tried to add the exemption for smaller units. So if you built, you know, three, three units, and you built a 2,400 square foot structure of space in the volume, then you, and they were each 800 square feet, then you would be exempt from paying the in lieu fee because each unit is at 800 square feet or smaller. If you built one larger unit and two 800 square foot units as part of that, then you would only pay it for one of the units. So that, that kind of is already driving at what you're, what you're trying to achieve, just that the number is much smaller, it's 800 square feet.
Okay. So would she get what she's trying to achieve by just scratching the exemption for the single family?
And just exempt the smaller units?
It has to be smaller.
Yeah, potentially.
I think, maybe I'm confused now, so many numbers and things.
But can I make up?
Yeah.
Yeah, do it. Thank you. Okay, great, thank you. Sorry. Hi. Okay, so there's a lot of information that's been floating around, and so I would, and then there's also actually a legal overlay that I'd want to do as well to this recommendation if we move forward with it. So I would maybe just recommend that the direction be that staff go back and look at that, if that's a thumbs-up direction from council, and explore if there are anything else, if there's anything else that can achieve that, and we would certainly highlight that and bring it back to you. I think we have done a lot of work in that direction already, and then make sure, if we do change anything or make that suggestion, that we do that legal analysis to make sure we're not in violation of the state law.
Okay, that sounds good.
So since we do have a motion on the floor, perhaps councilmember Lamb could remove it.
I motion that I withdraw the, the motion I put forward.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, just to try to make sure, and I appreciate that because I do feel like we were, we were designing something on the fly that was going to inevitably have unintended consequences, so I appreciate that. I guess what I was wondering is, with all of this, do you guys have any examples of communities that have done any of these types of exemptions and what the outcomes have been?
I mean, the most common exemption, which is what Redmond has had in place in their program, is for larger projects. So the big change here, not change, but the big step here, is to apply it to all units with whatever exemptions we come up with. So I think that's kind of the best example. There's not as many examples of these that are looking at more specific exemptions. So again, I think it's a great suggestion that we come back and give you kind of the fiscal, you know, high level, what the impacts are, and how it meets the policy goals, so going back to the plan and using it to drive some of the decisions here. And one last point, I didn't do a very good job of describing what I meant in terms of exemption, but perhaps there's a way to consider if someone didn't just build a single family but also built another smaller unit, having that somehow tied to the exemption so that you're getting a smaller unit that could be rented or for sale, even though it's not a quote-unquote "affordable" unit, it's still sort of meeting that target. So we can kind of take all of those options and come back with you with some more detail to help you make a decision.
And if it's possible to get that to us before the meeting, so we have time to kind of ponder it a bit and maybe formulate some questions, just, because again, I think all of these are great ideas, and I think we all have the right intention, but it has been my experience that if we don't kind of go through what are all the scenarios, we're going to create some policies that have some very unintended consequences, and I want to try to avoid that.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and one of the things to keep in mind is that we do have docketed for '25 and bringing back some very targeted code amendments. So I've tended, in our drafting conversations, to err on the side of caution and really limit the number of exemptions, because it's easier to go back and rewrite this to add exemptions than it is to remove the exemptions. So I've tended to err on the side of caution there, knowing that we are going to want to do some fine tuning over time as we start to see the middle housing market evolve. So we will be bringing back targeted code amendments going forward, so you will have opportunity to work on this again in '25 to some level, to do things like maybe tweak some of the exemptions.
Great. And then also, if, whatever you propose, if you can, if there are any examples out in the wild, to see what the, what the actual outcomes have been, that would be awesome. Thank you.
So for the three suggestions from Planning Commission, I think the third one we've kind of talked about, but are you coming back with? kind of talked about, but are you coming back with something for the first and the second, or all three?
We would come back for the first and the third. The second, I kind of got the sense, and just maybe you could verify, that really you weren't interested in, in creating an exemption where you can demonstrate they cannot apply the middle housing overlay. That's kind of subjective and complex to determine from our perspective, but we could provide language on the third that sort of identifies the priority of keeping it in the city, but that there might be some reasons for us to deviate from that. So, and we could come up with something for the first that really tries to address the conversation here and looks at some different scenarios, and send that out in advance of the meeting so that you can provide some feedback on that, and we can maybe hopefully tailor it so that we can open the hearing and adopt the comp plan and development regulations on the third.
Yeah, that sounds really good to me, yeah, especially that second one, I think that's always like, oh no. Councilmember Gupta?
Yeah, just really quickly, because you brought up impact fees, and I know impact fees, they have like an expiration date where you have to spend them within a certain number of years, is that, is there any sort of expiration date on the fee-in-lug program?
Not that we've come across in our research. And just so you know, we've done a lot of research on this lately, Emily's helped us out quite a bit, we've worked with Arch, we have Lindsay Masters, the Executive Director of Arch, on the phone here, I know she's at another night event right now, so she's agreed to join us in case there's any questions. But we've spent a lot of time looking into how this would work and apply, and other cities are also considering it alongside Yosemite.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, counsel, anything else on this slide? Okay, go ahead.
So I think we need to actual, to wrap up these suggested motions from staff, which cover the kind of clarification on the state-enabling legislation, that RCW citation, which I can flip back to, and then number two is no longer on the table based on the discussion tonight.
All right, counsel. Huh?
He said he can flip back to it. We don't.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Howe?
I think the motion was on the other slide.
It was on another slide.
Yeah.
Your last slide. I move to amend the Purpose Section of SMC 21 dot 10 dot 1 zero 1 zero as submitted, recommended by staff and legal, and add the RCW citation.
Second. All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, and then that second one, you'll come back. What else you got?
I mean, I guess we can just clarify, this is an opportunity to opine on other chapters of the code. We talked a lot about the affordable housing chapter, but we can just turn it over to you, mayor, if there's any discussion remaining on other chapters of the SMC.
Councilmember Stewart?
Can we talk about Mary's item?
So.
She stayed the whole time.
Yeah, that, we have two other agenda items following.
Oh, okay.
So we have critical areas, and then after that, we have the SB 5290 process improvements, and those are related to that, as far as I'm aware.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands for this portion. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, counsel. So next up, we have, yeah, and thank you to Jeff and Tyler as well for all their work and the work that will come in the next few weeks.
My one question is, when do we get copies of this coffee table book? One and two?
Well, after you adopt it.
Okay, okay, yeah.
We got to stay on schedule. I did leave one copy, there is one.
The draft somewhere, yeah, yeah.
Floating around, so, you know, maybe everyone takes it home for a night or something.
There you go, perfect, we'll rotate it, yeah.
We'll have it for you. We actually brought them to the APA conference, and people were pretty enamored with them.
Oh yeah, how did that go?
Oh yeah.
Good, it's been very well.
David did a fantastic job.
As usual, of course, great, thank you. Okay, David, go ahead.
Next on the agenda, I believe, and I'm going back to it, is, I believe, the critical areas item?
Yes.
Yep. So this evening, after, after closure of the public hearing at the last meeting, we have a final meeting on this topic, an opportunity for the council to deliberate and to make any final changes with adoption. There are, is an ordinance for your consideration, and if you recall correctly, the reason why we wanted to come back at this following meeting was because we were waiting for the Department of Commerce process to close. We did not receive any additional comments through the Department of Commerce process. That is now closed, and the city has the green light to take action, pass an ordinance, and adopt the updated critical areas regulations. Next to my right is Avril Beatty, and she will be providing a really short presentation, and we'll be passing it back to the council for deliberation and final action.
Hello again, Avril Beatty, current Planning and Permit Center Manager, sure you all remember me by now. Hopefully, we're here for the final item for the Critical Area Ordinance Update. You have had your deliberations, you have had opened and closed a public hearing, you've provided lots of valuable input, and so now we are before you with our recommended changes. We do have some last-minute tweaks, because we're human, and that's what we do, and these are going to be discussed by our ecological experts, the wonderful Nell Lund. So Nell, I will hand it off to you.
Thanks, Avril. Yeah, so just in final discussions with the city planning department, the building setbacks code section was discussed, and we determined that it would make sense to allow some flexibility and the option for a case-by-case assessment by a qualified professional through a critical areas report to potentially allow some minor reductions of setbacks by the director to a minimum of five feet. You know, the intention of setbacks for critical areas is to allow space for a building to be maintained without approaching into a buffer. And next slide. And then the other change, we discussed the wetland buffer section, section B is the wetland section, and as we discussed some comments that David received and reread that code section, we realized that some additional clarity could be added to cover the instance where a legally-protected site, I'm going to kind of go through the list, under 1 EI, illegally-protected site, a watershed project site consistent with a watershed plan, a site where development is prohibited under the shoreline master program, or high-quality habitat with permanent conservation status and conservation with WDFW. That's the criteria laid out in the code under which a corridor would be required to, along with minimization measures, to apply the mitigated buffer. However, if a qualified professional determines that none of those areas are present, and there is no potential to create a corridor for the site, then the applicant would only have to apply the minimization measures to apply those, those smaller mitigated buffers.
If I could add something to that, in, just a slight refinement, so we identified that there was a, what I'd call syntax issue with the code when reading it. So in reading through all the different sections, we identified the prior change that Nell outlined, which is the structure setback, we want to have some flexibility with structure setbacks, because that is a fairly rigid section of code, and it's oftentimes a tool that we'd like to use before modifying buffers, modify the structure setback. The other one, the one here on this slide, is really related to, so we have wetland buffers, there's two, there's two wetland buffers that apply in the code, there's the standard wetland buffer, then there's the mitigated wetland buffer. And the mitigated wetland buffer generally applies when there is some other feature on the property or within the property vicinity that you can connect by way of a habitat corridor. But if there, that does not exist, we wanted to be clear that you don't have to build the, to create the corridor. So it's important, because the way it read before, it wasn't clear that if one of those features or characteristics didn't exist on the property, the reader was left sort of wondering if he still had to do the corridor. So we're just clarifying that when you don't have those features on your property, that you're not required to do the corridor. It's kind of like, why would you create a corridor to nowhere? So just wanted to add that, that additional info there. It really doesn't change the, what the code was prior, it just clarifies and corrects what I consider to be a bit of a syntax issue in the text.
Are there any questions for Nell while we have her on the line?
I don't see any. Thank you.
So here we are with our next steps. We hope that you take action this evening through a formal vote on a motion, and so we have in front of you two options for a motion to adopt the critical area regulations as drafted, with either the modifications that we've presented regarding the building setbacks and the wetland table reference with the additional text, or any other amendments that you would like to make. Thank you.
All right, counsel? Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I move to approve the ordinance adopting updated critical areas regulations as drafted in Exhibit 1, and staff recommended changes to SMC 21 dot 030 dot 020 dot S, and SMC 21 dot 030 dot 020 dot V dot 1 dot E. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, I think, yeah, there's a lot of letters there. All right, Pam, would you like to speak to that? No, that's for, next one. Yeah, would you like to speak to that, Pam?
I don't think so.
All right, awesome. All right, counsel, any other questions or comments on this? Councilmember Trean?
Yeah, I won't be supporting this unless we add an amendment to this particular motion. So I would make the amendment that Section 4 Point E should read a file, file of critical areas affidavit regarding the presence and absence of critical areas on the site. Based on the response of the critical areas affidavit, the director may require a critical areas letter or report to be submitted by the qualified professional regarding whether there are critical areas on or buffers on the site. Critical areas letter may be appropriate for some sites, whereas additional studies may be needed, and a critical areas report is appropriate for more constrained sites or applicants. So in a sense, it's adding.
Sorry, I thought that was for the next item. Are you talking about Mary's thing?
It was not.
I'm so confused.
Yes, I'm on it.
That would be, if I'm correct, that would be under the submittal requirements, and that would be covered under the next item, which we're almost there.
All right.
All righty. Item number, whatever we're on now, 14, yeah, okay, this has been moved and seconded. Yeah, we're on 14 now, yeah. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Awesome. Thanks, Avril. Are you leaving, or do you got to stay for this one? Okay.
You're still stuck with me for one more item.
All right, item 15.
Sorry.
Yeah, this is a.
Shh, 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 don't jinx us.
Yeah, Councilmember Trean, this will be you.
Bear with me, bear with me.
Can I just repeat that again?
Repeat verbatim, I hope you have it memorized.
I got it.
Okay, bear with me, bear with me. Do, 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 do.
It's getting late.
La, 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 la. Start from the beginning. Okay. All right. Hello, I'm Avril Beatty with the City of Yosemite Community Development Department. I'm the current Planning and Permit Center Manager. Thank you for all of your attendance and attention this evening. I am here you again for the streamlining updates in response to Senate Bill 5290. I know it's all your favorite Senate bill. So here we are, and we've had deliberations, we've had an open and closed hearing. We are now before you, hoping that you take action on the adoption of not one, but two, because you had a coupon, two ordinances, amending the Perpetual Administrative Regulations and reorganizing Titles 16 and 21. So you have before you two potential options for a recommended motion. It's all yours.
Councilmember Trean?
So I move to approve the ordinance adopted, updated administrative regulations as drafted in Exhibit 1 and Exhibit 2, and further amend by the city council through the following, that Section 4 Subsection E should read as follows. File of critical areas affidavit regarding the presence or absence of critical areas on the site. Based on the response on the critical areas affidavit, the director may require a critical areas letter or report to be submitted by a qualified professional regarding whether there are critical areas and/or buffers on the site. Critical areas letter may be appropriate for some sites, whereas additional studies may be needed, and critical areas report is appropriate for more constrained, constrained sites or applications.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Councilmember Trean, would you like to speak to that?
No, I think it's been hammered on.
That's fair. Would anyone else like to discuss this one? Any comments? All righty, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Could I say, do I want to make him repeat it?
Yeah, no.
Aye.
Opposed?
Not to that.
All right, great, thank you.
So just to clarify with the city attorney, do we need two separate motions for the adoption of the two ordinances? Okay, so if you could just repeat all of that again really fast.
The second one doesn't require the same thing, though.
Correct, so the second one, the emotion.
I can do that.
Excellent.
I move to approve the ordinance adopting updated administrative regulations as drafted in Exhibit 1 and, no, wait, that's not, no, Exhibit 2. Sorry, just Exhibit 2. Thank you.
All right, moved and seconded. Did you have something?
No.
Oh, okay. You want to speak to that one?
Uh, no.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right.
Thank you so much.
Awesome, great, thank you. Anything else, you two?
No, that was quite a bit, so, yeah, thank you for sticking with us through this.
Yeah, thank you. Scott?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Just one really quick item, just as a reminder, as we heard the proclamation regarding Veterans Day, that Veterans Day is a city holiday, and City Hall will be closed next Monday in observance of Veterans Day. Encourage everyone to find an event or celebrate those veterans that are in your life. With that, mayor, I think that's all for this week, I'll turn it back to you.
Great. Counsel, do you have any reports or anything to add? Deputy Mayor Howe?
One just short note, the Emergency Management Task Force has come up with a set of PowerPoint slides to help educate elected officials on what's appropriate behavior, and what we could do, what we can't do as elected officials in the event of an emergency of any kind. And so we will be testing it with you guys shortly, because we're done, finally.
Counselmember Stewart?
I just want to remind everyone, tomorrow's election day, please get your ballots in before 8:00 PM.
And on that note, regardless of what happens tomorrow, or if we find out by the end of this week, please take care of each other, it's going to be interesting. So on that note, I will undertake a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Great, good night, everybody.